Everybody ready?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'll open the joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. Mr. Vice, do you have a forum?
Yes, sir, we have four.
You have a forum, all present of the Board of Supervisors. I would declare meeting officially open. Um, just a short word before I turn it back. All this meeting to, all of us can review the solar facility ordinance. We had met several times on this and there seemed to be some questions at the board meeting the other night. So since we're all of us are here, we can work out the details and hopefully come out with a finished product. Mr. Keith, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. I guess the first order of business is everybody had a chance to review his minutes from the last meeting. Want to entertain a motion to approve his minutes? We want to do that. All right. The vote moved to seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lights on? All right, minutes are approved. What do you think, Mr. Chairman, is just good step by section by section? Or just sections that have changes been made from?
I think if we go through sections that have changes, the way everybody can ask questions and we can, we can come up with our answer and move through.
Walk through that, you all.
Okay.
Good to see you. One year means a little while.
Which?
So the one that doesn't have the Amelia seal, so just this word. So all this is, is the same version. You want more? It's the same version that Holly put in your packet. And it's the same version that you all already had, both bodies had a plan, had a public hearing on. The only differences are highlighted in yellow, so it'll be easy to spot. And most of these are pretty technical, procedural recommendations. One of them is a little more self-centered, you probably don't want to talk more about, but I can just run, run through them, Mr. Chairman, and stop me. If you want to talk about something that's not Highland, if you have any questions for me, let me know. I'm Jeff Gore, the county attorney. And last time I was at a planning commission meeting, there's a lot of new faces, it's been a while, so good to see you all. So I'll just start going through it, the second page. On paragraph E there, that's just, it's just pretty technical, it was worded. What, what, this, this provision has to do with the one mile within a high voltage transmission line requirement. And, and the language that was already in here gave the county discretion to adjust that. And so it's just changing how that's phrased to instead of address the board's concerns, it's to mitigate land effects. That's really what, that's really why you, the board would, would adjust the, that requirement. Paragraph G. All right, this is the setback issue, I'm gonna put a pin in that, we'll come back to that. And for some reason you don't see my strike through, it should be a strike through of 1,000 feet. So apologize, I don't know why I did it. We'll come back to that one because I think the rest are easy. I don't know about that one. Okay, the next one, G1. So this, this first sentence, G1, has to do with the height of the bottom of the panel. In talking with industry folks, it came clear that that really wasn't as relevant as, I think the goal of the county was the top of the panel. We're talking about what you can see and can't see in the site, in the view shed and the impact, what impacts that is the, is the height above finish grade. They will vary as far as how far some of the equipment and the panels may go above the ground. And so that's, that was just a suggestion from, from industry. You know, there was no pushback on the 15 feet, I think that's a good change, because that's a lot lower. Because you have a, you have a, 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 a height limit now, so 15 feet is reasonable. The 10 feet just didn't seem necessary, so that's what that change would be. Next page, screening, again, this is really just the way it's phrased. It's, so again, throughout here, there's built-in provisions for the board to be able to alter what's in this ordinance through the special exception permit process. And it needs to be very clear, that's the board's authority. Of course, planning commission can recommend, but it's advised, but it's the board that makes that decision, not the planning commission, so that's just really a technical phrase proposed in K. Nothing on the next page. Okay, paragraph S on page five, it is bottom. So this is just from my experience with these projects in other localities and from talking to industry folks. Having 18 months is a default rule for when to start construction, probably isn't realistic. These projects take, just the process here, believe it or not, it's just the beginning, it's not the permitting process. For these folks, they have to go through a lot of state and federal level. And they have to negotiate our purchase agreements and all those things usually take more than 18 months. So yes, there is a built-in provision, the board can alter that through the permit process, but the point here was why set up a, a date that's probably not achievable in most cases and you're gonna have to either alter it or just give the non-starter. So 24 months seem more reasonable.
When does that 24 months start?
From the, from the permit. Yeah, when the CP is approved. Nothing on that, just different, next page. All right, page nine, again, was just making it consistent with the 24 months. I think it should have shown a streak in 18, 18 months, I messed that up, sorry. And then, okay, so that's it, any questions on those before we address the setback one? Okay, so that, yeah.
Sir. I'm not ready, I put on this. Proposing solar project is a half mile off from the power line. The, the river power line, not the main high voltage line. They wanna, they gotta run a line in easiest routes to private landowners property adjoining it. Proving on private landowners say you're not gonna run another line through my property. Because this is not electrical.
But it's not Dominion.
Yeah, this is not Dominion doing it, this is a pri, this is a private company and they wanna go through your property to run a line the easiest route to get to that.
They have to negotiate that.
Where the landowner says, it's no negotiation, you're not coming across my property.
Do another route. Yeah, that's, that's a private negotiation between.
Well, just wondering.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, but that's a good point, these are not public utilities that have even a domain authority like Dominion could do.
It's supposed to get walked all the way around and nobody lets it. Then what?
I mean, you would think they would sort that out before they come to the county, but.
I don't think I've heard that from these others. I may be wrong, but I don't recall hearing that ever being brought up. I think.
The power line.
Oh, now they're working off Virginia power line.
Yeah, well, it's close enough, but I'm, I'm going through a different scenario.
You have to acquire these.
Yeah.
And they can, if the owner landowner won't really seize them, it can happen.
Well, like I said, I just hadn't seen it.
And they don't, they're a private company, so they don't have the right to declare them into domain.
Yeah.
As long as we do this and accept them, if we say no to them, they're gonna name it, they're naming eventually.
I don't think, that's probably, I don't see how you can do that. They have a domain, you gotta have.
Dominion, I mean, Dominion, which, yeah.
The government.
Dominion did the private from the start, I guess.
Yes, Dominion is not doing the problem, no.
Dexter, this is also why they're selecting the areas they are and why the developers tell us while people fear that it's gonna be all over million, it can't be, because it's only practical firms that put it in a very small number of places and we're almost maxed out on the number of places.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
But I've never, that's, I've never heard anyone ask that question, that's, that's a good question. I mean, I think it's similar to when they go to the, the site acquisition and negotiate with the landowners for the site. They figured all that out, they should figure all those rights out before they come to the county. Or else they're wasting their time.
Yeah. Position I was coming up with. And a real.
Like a real amount of power can't be transferred unless it's a high voltage.
Yeah, yeah, because he can't handle, I asked him, he can't handle X amount of voltage. And that one there, I know they were talking like I was maxing it, unless they run more power lines, then that's the Dominion.
And they said they've only, I think there's only two acceptable minds in all, in all of Amelia, one on Dominion, one on Southside. That are accepted, again, why the fears of it being everywhere at this point, it's not possible.
I don't know that.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else on those?
Unless they build substations. Correct?
No, it still have to be, now, we can't just build a substation, it have to be a high voltage line with, I mean, if you put a substation on a regular line, they still can't connect to it. If the lines don't have the capacity to be able to, to do it, they've still gotta go to wherever the high voltage line is.
And substations do go through locals area.
Well, that, that can change, I'd like to share some, well, I think it's, you know, current general information for what we're doing here, that's somebody sent me a, a article. It's really out of Charlotte, Port House, an independent journalist. It actually was in the New York Times. And, and just, just a few places in here that I want to reference. It talks about rural Virginia where a recent boom in solar farm construction has given many people pause. Observationalists and farmland advocates argue that the solar gold rush is displacing valuable forests and farms when families could be going on already developed or degraded land, including abandoned industrial sites and landfill. Some even warn that a decades-long push that's accepted today could be undermined by pound, uh, pound driven forest loss. Since approving Randolph, that's a large one that got approved up there in Charlotte. Another large installation, Charlotte County has put a hold on any new solar projects until at least 2024. Measures like these, which have been imposed in at least 31 states, may become a major hindrance to carrying out the inflation reduction. Utility scale solar is now as cheap or cheaper than any other form of power, but it is space-intensive. The American Farmland Trust projects that can meet renewable energy targets. Many eastern states will have relatively high, which have relatively high population densities. They need to devote between one and a half percent and six percent of their undeveloped land to solar panels. Several independent districts suggest the country could power itself with roughly the acreage currently dedicated to land most everyone would agree is already degraded. And up to 39% could be met by putting panels on roofs. And this is very interesting, the data centers, uh, the ones like the ones in northern Virginia by Amazon, Google and Microsoft, they have committed to renewable energy. The data centers would soon gobble up two gigawatts of power, a recent report estimated. Almost one-sixth of a state's total power consumption. Neither the state nor the tech giants determine where new solar projects go. Citing instead is left, left up to developers who often seek at large flat parcels near transmission lines and to local governments and planning and zoning boards, which are often unprepared to assess solar's environmental impacts. And Virginia offers relatively few incentives to encourage development on rooftops, parking lots and other developed or degraded areas. Last spring, Virginia legislature passed a bill acknowledging that utility scale solar can have significant adverse impact on forests and farmland and creating an advisory panel to, to develop measures to reduce this impact. I believe, gentlemen, changing here from the F1 meeting. Well, other counties have revised zoning rules to restrict the size of new projects or even ban them altogether. There are plenty of places where solar energy could be developed without triggering conflicts with natural resources or concerns about rural landscapes. Rooftops and parking lots combined could in theory meet nearly 80% of the nation's electricity needs, according to the Department of Energy.
Anyhow, what's 15 minutes last week? They were in England. They put in a windmill farm, which is part of the green energy deal. They went to this, it's somewhere in middle of England in an old city. They got 330 windmills in this one project. Every time that they make one revolution, it power up a hundred ton for 200 watt. And yet 330, I'm like, they're just doing this. When it went to town, they were saying the name was, the company that put them out there was a gas and oil company. They changed over to green energy company and solar is part of the next project, they say they, so right. They said their selling point was, we're gonna lower your life. This is gonna lower your electric costs. Everybody may ask, so tell how much your electric bill might be out? It doubled. Most of them doubled their price. So they keep throwing this idea, I want to say it's gonna lower your energy costs amount. That's a sales gimmick. 60 minutes, I'm just repeating what I.
I think one of the points in here is that, it's perverted discussion here is, you know, land up there in Loudoun County is a lot more expensive than this just down here. And that just because there, that the capacity of existence, they, they, uh, met with a much lower volume. When you're looking at anywhere between one and six percent in eastern states, you're, you're talking about, uh, you're talking about a lot of territory. So. It's, and it's what, it's what all the localities are facing too. And localities were prepared for this. Charlotte County, its population is 11,000 and something, it's a rural county, but similar to, so that, that's.
Before you get on it, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, before you get on the thousand-foot setback, I had a couple of questions that Jeff may be able to answer. Uh, this solar farm is possibly supposed to come in off of 616. Company's looking at that. That's doing that project to start with, is doing it for a private, private individual. When we're talking about decommissioning that, would the company that the private individual hires to build the solar farm have to come back before the planning commission? Or does the group that sets up, that we okay to put a certain solar farm in, have that responsibility? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I think I do, um, so, I mean, I don't know the details of that project, but, proposed project, but the permits are run with the land, so it's a, it's a zoning decision, it's a special exception permit is on the landowner, right? And it doesn't change unless the board at some point changes the terms of the permit or, or terminates the permit. So as long as the permit is in place, it, it's on the landowner and whoever that happens to be at that time. Now, in the meantime, uh, the bonding requirements, that's gonna be done by the commercial developer. Uh, because the landowner's not gonna pay that, um, so they'll have their own deal, but the, the commercial developer will have the bonds in place. Should they or the landowner not do the decommission as required? So like, like all rezonies, typically you have the landowner and then the developer, and the developer is the one that, that gets the permits and is really, is in reality the one who's on the hook for compliance, but at the end of the day, the permit conditions are on the land as if you had rezoned the property with those conditions, that would, that's what a special exception permit is. Does that get to your question?
Yeah, I think it answers it. And another question I had is on the battery backup pack, or see if I'm finding what page it is. You know, we have 5,000 feet.
Page now, uh, page six?
Could be. Yeah, I think it's six. You know, it has battery pack up, maintaining a minimum 5,000 feet setback from all roads, property lines. Is that gonna be too excessive? And are, are the, you think the solar farms actively gonna use batteries or are they gonna, it's gonna be cheap for them, put it straight on the line?
I think it varies, uh, Larkin, at one point I was told about a, probably a year and a half ago by solar, by a law firm that represents a lot of these solar developers. And they said that the future was battery storage and that all utility scale projects would have battery, a battery storage component because the battery storage technology has gotten so much better, um, that it, it makes sense for them to do that. But since I had that conversation, I've seen utility scale projects applied for that don't have battery storage. So I, you know, I don't know, so I don't, I don't know if that's gonna be, you know, part and parcel with every, every big project going forward or not. I think it's just gonna depend on the, the business model and maybe the proximity to the transmission line, or I'm not exactly sure, I think we're have to see. As far as the 5,000 feet, you know, I didn't touch that because I, I got, I received no feedback from any, anyone on that, from industry, from, from companies that are currently looking at Amelia, who are following this closely. None of them mentioned that to me, so I didn't touch it. So it's a, 5,000 feet's a big number, I agree, but I just haven't heard anything on that, so I didn't, I left it.
Well, I didn't know, you know, I could understand on a big track, you know, 5, 600 acres, but if you're on a smaller track, 40, 45 acres, that's gonna wipe it out for, for that landowner if he's interested in it. But I was assuming the smaller ones probably would not utilize batteries, they would be the ones that would put them right on the power line. With the larger ones, possibility going to, um, you know, batteries or some other storage. That was a question I had. The other question I had, I guess it would be under supervisors or board of planning commissions thing. You know, on the one where we have okay, we got them to put, uh, I guess, uh, trails through it for the animals go through. I didn't see where, anywhere in this ordinance that that's stated. Should that be stated in there or should that be, um, just a stipulation once we get a big one that we need to look at?
I know what you're talking about, that was part of the, uh, the project, the, the project that was approved not too long ago, I don't, you're right, I don't see, I mean, yes, that could be in there, some sort of wildlife management plan. Um, and we can pull from what we did in that prior deal and, uh, put that in the, uh, in here. I say, I guess you're right, that's not, not something that's.
It is in there that they may have to do a wildlife study.
Okay.
Anything in there has to do that they may have to put some type of thing. But I can't put my finger on that page right now.
So yeah, page five, number eight, yeah, I didn't, so I didn't look at that again, that's, so it is a wildlife management study is, is required as long as, with necessary mitigation measures.
So it's specific for threatened or endangered, so I think, I, I, I think Larkin's got a good point. What we put on torches more broad than that, that would be good to review and potentially pull over.
Well, we could simply strike threatened or endangered.
Yeah.
I guess if you read it wrong. I mean, any project's gotta do T and E.
That's a state requirement, we don't have to require that.
How about you can have the threatened or endangered? We just general wildlife patterns.
Yeah, I think it's a question of whether you just want it confined with the state, and so if the state says, I'm done, because that would even take out the render endangered, then it's still wildlife trap, all of this is based on vision of wildlife, or if you want a specific something.
In my opinion, if you left corridors for wildlife to travel back and forth through there, that would eliminate them, jump in the fence and make a damage to the panels or something like that. And it would be good for the wildlife to be able to not go around 100 acres and gotta go through it.
Yeah, they, they're pretty smart, they know it's the whole, they'll figure it out, they'll go to it.
They'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I had a question about the battery storage, I think we mentioned it here about possibly building some burns around the, the battery storage, if it did come.
Page six, C2.
I would, um, I have a little more thought on that, if, if we build a burn and the battery catches on fire, what leaves out the battery still getting to the ground? What if we put in there that we need some type of containment system? That was like, like a concrete.
That's already part of the state requirements too.
So they don't let them do burns, so it's gotta be a concrete?
Well, I think they require, they require it to have, I don't think they would take, um, but they require it to be on a surface that doesn't allow it to.
Get in previous surface.
Okay.
Yeah, but was it liquid tight though? I don't remember seeing it being liquid tight. The, the best, as they call it, the, the actual building. They, they say they put them in a building. It's got ventilation and all that in it, but is it liquid tight? That's the question. Would it be liquid tight? Because if it's not and you have a fire, whether it's sitting on concrete or not, it's gonna run off the concrete. So that, that dome should be liquid tight. At least up to the level of.
I agree, this doesn't say, I thought the state could do it, I don't have a copy.
Yeah, I read something somewhere else that, that they were not liquid tight. There's so much stuff out here, you don't know which direction to go.
I mean, we haven't, if you look at, uh, paragraph little A at the top of page six, I mean, we're already saying it's gotta be constructed, maintained and operated in accordance with national standards, national electrical code, national fire code, NFPA fire code. So, I mean, then, I mean, I, I mean, if you want to get more specific on the, on the, on the foundation and the base that it's set on, we could. And Steve says it should be appropriate foundation. We've already cited all these other standards, I, I, we can, we can talk with your building folks to see if there is a standard, industry standard and get that information to you.
Well, see, what I've seen is they're using like Conex boxes. Well, see, what I've seen is they're using like conex boxes. That's what they use. I'm not saying they're actually using the conex, but it's the same style. For the battery storage. Well, if that's the case, they're not liquid tight and you've got all that acid in there.
Well, it's gotta be sitting on something.
They gotta have an extinguishing system installed wherever they store the batteries anyway.
At that cooling ventilation, all that, so I mean, it's gotta be more, so what you're talking about, it's still need to decide a building though with all.
Yeah, number B says supply of a second layer of physical containment.
Sort of related to that. The whales, is there anything? Stated on how much water these whales have got to be producing in case there is a. Accident there that they have enough water supply at all times to fight. A fire because if they go in there and just dig a whale and it's giving you ten gallons a minute.
Well, they was at a burn. Can't put them out, right?
Yeah, you can, but it's not with water, it's not with water. That's why this is extending.
I, I foresee if they do catch on fire, this town will be like a, this is gonna be like a substation. We gonna stand outside the gate, keep it from like. We might send somebody in there.
Well, actually, it's better than a substation because it has to have all this pressure system. From a safety concern, it'd be better if they were pushing it to the road and not a mile in the woods too, you know. Or first responder access, getting closer out there, the whole.
They gotta build an accessible road to it.
Yeah, but still, you wanna be a mile back in the woods.
They don't call it fire, we call it track, uh, very. Let it burn underground, you know, smokes.
So on the issue, we, we, we've gone through a couple things quickly, on the, on the foundation issue, do you want, just. I could, why don't we check, Taylor, we can check if you're building fire folks and just get the specific industry standard. For how they build those. And, and sorry, and then, I mean, we can give you that information and, and you can. Sign it, it's, it's, or not, but, um, I don't have any language right now to, to tighten it or change it. Fairly, um. On the endangered species, I think we skipped that before you guys. Decided anything, do, do we wanna, do y'all want to just maybe with broader and take out the threatened or endangered and just make it.
Little bit of an endangered species here, guys.
Is there another one you think, or is there something else?
I, I think that was it.
Just a liquid type building. I don't, I don't know.
I don't think the buildings will be liquid, 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 I think the foundation and the containment under it's.
So they go build it like a storage tank, fuel tank, that would be fine, as long as you'd have something to catch it off.
Let's look at that, let's find out. Okay, you all, you all wanna talk a little about the setbacks?
Is everybody good with the changes that Mr. Gore presented? Except the exception of the setback section. If we do it all there, all the other change, okay, all right.
Um, okay, page two, paragraph G, um, it did say a thousand again, sorry, it's not showing a stricken. Um, so we do have information from, or just from my firm's experience and from talking to. Other counties and, and industry folks, um. A typical set, I think right now we're fifty feet, right? Um, I think that's what the current ordinance is. What we're seeing typically in counties is anywhere from fifty to two fifty. It's kind of a, is a typical range, um, granted, in the special section, exception permit process. Uh, the board does have the discretion, um, in the process of looking at that site and that project. To change, and that language is in here, that's the second sentence that's highlighted there, that the board can, can prescribe other setbacks based on site conditions. So, to me, um, the, the thousand feet is. Probably, not probably, is a significant, would be a significant outlier. Um, I've never come across anything close to that and my, my concern with something that looks far. Being in black and white in the ordinance is, is, is. Is that. It could potentially sort of on its face, open the county up to litigation over, so. Well, it's really extremely large. And so I guess. The legal framework for analyzing whether or not a zoning ordinance is. Essentially allowed under state laws, is it cannot be arbitrary or capricious, your, your zoning decisions and your ordinance. It's gotta be reasonable and it's, I think it would be a little difficult possibly to deform a thousand foot setback.
What, what if we left them out? My, what I'm, what I propose is that. Uh, people have been screaming about landlord's rights, okay, we've heard that about every public here. At the same time that the landlord wants to develop his property has rights. The surrounding landlords also have rights not to have their property debaguated by somebody else. So to protect everybody's rights, what I propose is. We would be willing to reduce that setback to a special exception permit, that way we get to look at every one of them that comes through individually. The special exception permit providing. Every landowner that surrounds that piece of property is willing to sign an affidavit, they are aware. Of the requested reduced setback and they were okay with it. If they want to do something, and that puts you kind of in the field of everybody gets the stakes over their doors, their property, and they, that protects their rights. It, it may be that the solar company has to say, look, you don't sign this document, we'll make an annual payment to you, I mean. Maybe if they can negotiate that deal, then good for them. But what I'm saying is that I feel obligated not just to protect the rights of the guy who's developing property, but to people that could take a loss. That surround that piece of property, if they all agree to it, they don't care, then why, why should I care? That's my point.
Um, so from, from, I hear what you're saying, I think that's sort of what the, the public. Process is about, getting the public input, um, during the hearing and prior to the hearing and at the meetings. What the board of supervisors can't do is delegate its authority, this is a legislative decision by the board supervisors. And Virginia law doesn't typically allow a board even to, in this essence, delegate part of that authority to citizens. So what, what my concern is with, with an approach where. If your order said, hey, if your neighbors agree, then we're fine with it, well, what if the board's not fine with it for other reasons?
Well, then it still says special exception, but we can try.
What if one neighbor just has some family feud with another neighbor? Then you're basically giving a neighbor veto power over a, over a private land use neighbor.
Not the one neighbor doesn't agree though, that that gives, and that, and it's up to the solar company to. Smooth those feathers or make, negotiate some sort of a deal with them.
Well, and they should, right, and I, I would say they should be doing that anyway.
Why are we treating one business or one industry, you know, all that, different than every other one? Because if somebody wants to open up, just go pick a sawmill. Are we gonna say, no, you gotta have that sawmill a thousand feet from the road, cause I don't wanna look at it. It's in government, you have to be equal or you're gonna open yourself up for lawsuits, you have to treat everybody the same. So, so why is, why are we looking at one saying, we don't wanna look at that, so we want a setback, so we don't have choices, but we don't mind looking at. Project B, C or D, you just, you can't, you're not supposed to do that, though. It's not supposed to be like that.
Well, my point is not to, is not to. This is protecting people, protecting with their investments, protecting people's property. And, and the, if the, if the guy wants to have the right to develop his property, it's not right for him to be able to do that at the expense of all of his neighbors.
But how is it? If I wanna build non-hog.
It has a setback, it has a setback, yeah. Everything has a setback, if you wanna build a house or a lot, you've got a setback. But the thousand foot setback is not random, and that's something we require for.
I was trying to think of something that I used to think of, um, but, and related.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Could, could you leave the thousand foot in there since the other solar farm? Has kind of set that as president? Or the board supervisor, whoever's okayed that, has set that as a president, but stated some way that. Every solar farm would be looked at differently, that would be max. Because if you get a, a solar farmer wants to go in close to some crop land. They're willing to take the timber down and put it in there, I see no reason to put. Uh, two hundred fifty or fifty foot setback if a guy can plant his beans right against the wire or the fence. But that would be considered between every different solar farm that wants to go in. And at that point too. If the participants or, or the landowners on one side did not want it. That close and the landowners on the other side could care less. You could do some shifting. Is there any way to put language like that, thousand is the max that we think about? But we'd also consider anything under that. If it was, you know, more reasonable.
Since the board can change it though.
So, yeah, Larkin, so first on the thousand feet in the, in the torch project, that. That provision in the site agreement, I think it's in the permit too, maybe it's just in the permit. Um, it's not a thousand feet from the property line, it's a thousand feet from adjacent residences. So that.
All right, that's a little different.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, well, what's here is way more stringent.
This is, this is simply from the property line.
And.
Well, we could have, could you have it, a thousand foot from a residence?
Either, because you, you wouldn't want every single, whatever the most recent one is, consider that the precedent, as you said, we're looking at each of these individually. So if the next one, let's just say was two hundred feet, you also wouldn't wanna say that's the precedent either. You're looking at them individual, so. I definitely don't think when the board voted for, we didn't discuss, actually, I'm confident we discussed it being a precedent.
I like.
No, but I think, I think each of them ought to be looked at separately.
We are.
But that, that one, even though it's not a precedent. As the planning commission, when we think about or look at another solar farm, it's gonna be stuck in our back or heads, well, this one was a thousand feet. Can we come under that and make it more, uh, likable? And more acceptable to those surrounding landowners? Do you understand what I'm saying? Whether it's a presence or not, we've already pretty much stuck it in all our heads that it, it's a possibility.
Be kind of hard to put a thirty acre solar farm on a fifty acre plot of land. But Larkin, it shouldn't be in our head because the thousand feet for torch is not what's written in here. Just because they're the same number of feet, they're not being used the same way.
Yeah, but don't you think it ought to? This ought to be stated a little different then. From residents instead from property line.
The thousand. Well, I would be, I think that's fine, that, that would be very different, yeah. A hundred foot, so about a thousand feet.
That would be closer to how, how you would relate. Other solar farms. If it was thousand foot from a residence as compared to a thousand foot from foot, from property lines.
Now, have you seen that anywhere, Jeff, like where they? Would that be more in line with not being on here?
I've, I've only seen that in the torch deal and again, that was. A thousand feet from occupied dwellings, um, and that's something that worked for that property and they agreed to. Um, I think that's a significant change, I mean, I, I, but your other question, Larkin, can you have flexibility? Absolutely, and that's what that second sentence is supposed to mean. Um, and so, I mean, you all could even put a range in here. Um, you, you could, you could reword it to be, you know, thousand feet from occupied dwelling, or you could put. You could put a range of setbacks, I've never really seen it done that way, but you could say that it should, you know, it shall be, you know, two hundred fifty to a thousand feet, depending on the. Site conditions of the project and it's up to the.
I think it, I think it would be more platable.
For two reasons, if we can, if people are from, they don't wanna see them from the road. I think they ought to be a thousand feet from least roads and private driveway. And the one citizen in particular, he doesn't wanna drive by, he can live with it a thousand feet away.
We gotta be careful that day because one day somebody say, I don't wanna drive by a blue house. And we're not gonna allow blue houses anymore.
I understand that too.
We, we can't, with the government, you can't rely on opinion. You, it's gotta be fact, that's, well, we gotta be careful. Because I have to definitely, but not say the majority of citizens are telling us they don't wanna see them. I have never, there's no evidence of that from the people in my district.
It wasn't mine, that's all I heard, we don't wanna see them, get them away from the property line.
Well, we're concerned about land, land use and losing acreage, which, what we're talking about in that case is just losing more and more land. I don't do it.
I don't see where they gonna lose, does it? Say it's a, it's a bean field in the corner, a house and a resident. Set the thing back a thousand feet, they can still farm that land, they can farm right up to the fence. But we kept it a thousand feet off that road and that private driveway. I can, I can probably live with the. From the residence, but let's keep it out of, let's keep them out of sight the best we can.
The thing about if you, if you reduce it, you can't, somebody, somebody comes to us with a proposal. You can't say, well, the ordinance says it's two hundred feet, but we want you to put three hundred. They meet to two hundred, no, they meet to three hundred feet, they don't have to come to us. What I'm saying of. I'm saying is if you keep it large and they wanna reduce it, they have to come to us to get it reduced. And we get to review each one of them individually as it comes through.
Okay, but just to be clear, if you said zero, it still has to come, the process is the same, your review and oversight is the same, our review and oversight is the same.
If they, if they meet all the zoning orders, that's why they don't have to come to us.
Because, because they cannot do this without a special exception permit, they can't locate utility scale solar. Any kind of utility scale solar is coming to.
And that's intentional.
To go down, then they go up. That will save a lot of arguments. If you already up, we can come down. We can't, that's the song of it up.
You add it to it, but you can take away from it.
We can take away from.
And it might be a site specific where, yeah, we could, we could reduce something, reduce.
I'm not gonna go for something the lawyer says is, it's up to litigation.
Well, here's, nah, here's an option, uh, to, to Larkin's earlier point, the thousand foot from occupied dwelling. Alright, so that's a deal that's been done and it didn't get a lot of pushback from anyone and that's, see, maybe that's, maybe that's one component of. Occupied dwellings, people seeing it from their house, neighbors' houses, the other issue is the setback from property lines and rights away. What you, what you could do, if you really wanna make it. If you really wanna make it a, very clear that this is a site by site process, put a range in. You know, so, so you have a minimum and a maximum and say, you know, it's gonna, the site, site. The, the setback from property lines and public rights away, um, shall be, you know, shall range from two hundred and fifty to a thousand feet. And then.
I think, I think that's a good idea.
It depends on the specific site conditions and it would be as. The board decides in the permanent process, so you have a range, a published range, it doesn't start at a thousand. But it gives the board clearly the.
Only thing about that is every, everyone will come in here with two hundred and fifty feet on it. And then they wait for us to make them push it back and they go say, why, why are you making me do that? I'm trying to limit.
Well, I mean, and I think in that case, the board should, the land commission anymore should have a good reason.
What if we put a range of five hundred to a thousand?
I can get on board with that. And a thousand feet on a resident.
I think the county needs to. The, the county is what needs, needs to be deciding. Uh, rather than the developers. We put in here what the developers want. That's. Not necessarily what is desired. And. We want as much flexibility as possible. Well, I think that's, you know, the two. This general. this general uh, things that I see in the discussion that's, that's going on, that's important. And of course, the other thing is somebody said, we do have a history of a thousand feet uh, setback in this confinement livestock. So it, it isn't that, it's something, uh, that doesn't it's not being resisted already.
I think, um, you also, that's a good point. I think you also have to look at, at different types of land use and figure it out. And why you have certain rules of rest of land, because I think those operations can pose significant, you know, environmental and groundwater hazards. I think that's probably a state requirement.
This can't do that.
Contaminate groundwater.
If you have a fire accident, it can be that way also.
That could be our house too.
Yes. Stale, so it's like all. We're not talking about one little room of these things, we're talking about acres of.
You have the same waste issues.
I was standing on the batteries, was that a lot of things, they come here and get, get it without the batteries. And then they come back to put in the batteries.
They still gotta ask for it. They gotta ask for it. Their permits not gonna say they can have batteries like that.
I understand they'll come back, but that is what they have in mind.
That's pretty risky for them. That's the guess. I mean, if they want to go to that level of risk.
We incorporated that somewhere in there that would appease. I don't know if it's gonna appease, it keeps us out of control.
It's still gonna eliminate all the small projects.
I think your current setback.
We join the individual and ask for a reduced setback. We're not saying it has to be that. We're just saying that, that, and that's what it's gonna be unless you come with a special section request on the neighborhood.
I think this conversation when used in work would be pretty clear. If they read that in black and white, they're gonna go straight to their lawyer because it's in black and white.
Go.
Um. Cause it doesn't say, we don't really mean this, come talk to us.
I just know, I think, I think your current setback is fifty feet, so, you know. Oh, everything we've discussed is way beyond what you have now, right? So to go from fifty to a thousand fifty from fifty to five hundred is ten times your current.
Well, you, I mean, you put five hundred in, why didn't you put that in?
Uh.
I think it's down from the random.
Yeah, cause I thought that was as low as I could get.
Not the way counties just flat against them, right?
I don't know.
That's what I.
They're working on their ordinance.
Yes. There's ever any other county, is there any other locality that is just playing, we don't want them in our county? And what did they do to keep them out?
Louisiana.
What did they do to keep them out? We can sit here all night going back and forth.
They're just stalling it. I mean, all your northern counties are not allowed. That's right, that's right. I'm surprised Chesterfield's got one covered. I mean, really.
I was kind of laughing that they said there's data centers or power on data centers, this seems that generators with diesel fuel in them as big as this room times ten, so they don't, it's funny because they're not putting solar on any of those and they're.
Well, I'll get to Dexter's question. So you were trying to say, what do we put in that will prevent them from coming?
No, no, what has South County's done to prevent them? I see what we're trying to do is slow it down. I think so. They don't pop up like the old seven eleven G's two years ago.
They actually never put in their spring, it's a lot of special stuff on permit, that's how they're, right? I'm pretty sure that's what they're doing.
Louisiana.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that would be my guess as to how a county would go about it.
Moratorium.
Right.
Which they have lawsuits pending.
So here, here's my issue with the moratorium. Some of you may remember, I know Taylor does, you may have been on the board, Taylor. You know what I'm talking about? Uh, the board, this is before we were representing you, caveat. The board put a moratorium on the application of biosilence.
Okay, I can see.
And lost up to, it was challenged all the way up to state supreme court and the county lost. Moratoriums and land use, I don't advise. Alright, so if something is, is a legal use, if it's permitted and regulated by the state and there's state code sections that clearly authorize it. I think then it comes down to what, what the local land use decisions have to be um, within your authority to, to, you know, regulate the use of land.
She's not.
A moratorium is beyond regular, moratorium is saying, this is a, we vote, this is a legal state permitted and federal use of land and in this county you can't do it. So I, I wouldn't advise a moratorium. I think, I think what you have here is, is incredibly more robust than your current ordinance. Um, and so I don't want to get too fixated just on the setback issue because all the other components you have put in here. I mean, just look at your screening uh, provisions, screening and buffering provisions are way beyond what you have now, right?
Cause all the blue is everything.
All the blue stuff you've already approved or the plant and or not approved, considered, not approved. Um, that's already been in there as, as proposed, um. So all the stuff on battery storage, all the stuff on buffers and screening and vegetation. Uh, the beefing up of, you know, landscape plan, stormwater management, erosion settlement control on page, that, all that stuff is new. So, you know. I mean, you're doing a lot of this already.
It wasn't randomly done, it came from other counties ordinances and things and, um, information.
And it says the buffer's gonna be a hundred fifty feet. You already have everybody's universal support of all those other things.
You already have a heart. Will y'all want to kick this around while I throw something else that's illegal, get everybody riled up? Are you ready?
Charlotte County has put a hold on any new solar projects.
Soil types. Soil types, prime ground. Prime.
It says measures like these have been imposed in at least thirty-one states. So it is being done. Uh, I'm in favor of solar. So, uh, I just want to see solar in the best places for so.
I like to eat and I'm sure everybody else in here does too. And we have very limited crop ground. We're losing it daily, weekly, monthly. And I know you're gonna get into property rights and all that, but the prime, prime farm ground and farm ground that's statewide importance, I think is something that we ought to look at. That's just you can't reproduce it, you can't replace it. Once you destroy it, it's gone. It's done.
I do remember it was discussed, I just can't remember what, like we did talk about soil fate. The speaker came in and showed us how they, it might be what you have, that they, they did maps of all the different soil types. It became, remember at one of our meetings, they got him and said he was, I think it's a standing, you can think about the committee. Um, the governor's appointed committee or whatever. But he mentioned that they had mapped the whole county with soil types and that he was available for that information. I wonder if that's.
Probably said to something.
Yeah.
You said N R S, N R C S, yeah. I've had.
It did come up.
They said that would fit more better in the comp plan.
But we, we've also, we've already discussed, I hope it's in here, I didn't read every word of it. But this song, you, they can use farmland laws that had not been, had not been farmed for ten years or something.
Yeah.
That's in the, that's in the comp plan.
That's in the comp plan.
Thing you may have to worry about on the, uh, soil types, you, you gonna have some timber land that has had real good soil, the people didn't want to crop, row crop it and they put it in pines. The other thing you're gonna have is just like down there, I think it's oak ledge, whatever, you got a farm. Developer bought it, put houses in large acres. You've lost that crop land, period. So if you put something in here on that, is it gonna be something also that we'll have to consider? If a housing development comes in, about the five hundred acre farm and wants to put in houses. That's taken, I mean, once that goes out, it's out for life. Possibly this solar. I'd say it's life, but it could possibly come back in and grow trees or something. But once it grows the house, it doesn't grow trees anymore. That's only my concern on, on, on that. But I think back with the two fifty to a thousand or hundred and fifty to two thou, or to a thousand that, uh, Jeff has kind of recommended is states that, you know, we'll look at each one separately. And we can all, we can come under two fifty, but, but that right now, we're kind of looking in that. Uh, but that was my concern on the soils, you know. And that's the reason I threw the thing out about hasn't been row cropped in five to ten years. But they said that would go in the comp plan better really than in this ordinance. So we would be looking at that through the comp plan if it was a housing development also.
Alright, I would agree with both of us.
My concern with both the number of years and the soil types is you're restricting it for solar farms, but not for anything else. So.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm.
I think, yeah, I.
But if it's in, in the comp, comp plan, you, you, you restrict or, or leaky, to gussing it for everything. I'm finished.
Hang on, I got him. I got him.
And that's what the comp plan would cover, is that what we're saying?
Yes, but the other problem with that is, I mean, there's a lot of farmers in here. If you tell a man, you can't do anything with your soil but farm it, that's hard. If you tell somebody, oh, you can do farm that land because it's too good to develop.
Which came out because we said, you can't, and they weren't happy about it because they've got farmland that they can't farm because they're not making money and they are trying to do something different so they can keep their. And they were told, you can't be part of the project. I feel like that's where we.
I agree, that's the, that's the alternative.
Yeah, turns around and sells it to a developer and now.
We had some that appeared as a public hearing and says that they didn't think it should be on the farmland. And one of those, I don't approve all of them.
I have no issue with doing like a soil survey or something that, you know.
Yeah, probably not talked about.
I think you need to.
Putting that, this is, this is information that the county gathers and all the other things that the applicant has to do in the permit process. And is to provide, you know, soil samples, just so you have the information. But that, you know, not, and we can address, when we get to the comp plan, that's where I think that discussion was, but that's the comment, it's very different.
Cause in reality, it's only good farmland if somebody's willing to farm it. Right? I mean, it's not serving, like you said, that, that same farmer who was told you can't do solar.
No.
Went and sold it and now it's houses.
See, if he's not making money farming it, he's probably doesn't have the prime farmland. See, that's the difference. You're gonna be looking at two pieces of the ground because you're gonna be dealing with production like y'all picked three hundred plus bushels of corn this year on some, some ground, but you probably also picked two twenty-five.
You're making a very narrow definition of crops.
I'm just using that, you could do beans, you could do whatever.
So we're not talking.
No, no livestock, no timber. It's row cropped now and it's prime. It's the, the number one and number two, not three, four, five, six, seven, one and two only, which is prime. Because I feel like we're not.
Someone to come tell you at your house, we cannot do anything else with it for what it is today.
Well, they do it anyhow. They can tell me where I build, where I'll put a, where I'll put a septic tank, how big a house I can build. I gotta jump through all these hoops to do whatever I want to do now. It's no different. Well, if I want to build a house in a swamp, they gonna tell me none. I can't do that. What if I want to put one up on stilts out in the middle of the swamp? They're not gonna allow me to do it. I mean, you can nitpick this all day long.
Well, you actually, and you just have to have an alternative dream.
But, but. No, they probably won't let you.
No, you're right.
That's right, thank you. It's a wetland. So my point is, you bought a farm, which was farmland. And we're not picking, like I said, we're not picking three, four, five, six, we're talking prime. What I think we're, we're not looking at.
It could be an inheritance. It's not just you bought it, it could be you inherited it. It could be your now, think about this, you've got farmers who are old enough that they need long-term home care. By Medicare rules, they can't own all these, this land and still get Medicare.
Yep.
You could be telling them they have no alternative but to sell it off for something else. Whereas we've had farmers, we missed, so why they're putting on some of them, so they can save the rest of their farms. They want to put a portion of it in solar. And so you're, you also said a minute ago, you don't want to put things next to the road, you don't want to put next to the house.
I didn't say that. Don't put words in my mouth.
The group.
Don't put that in my mouth.
The group and it was, and I agree with.
The group, what's the group?
David, he just owned it. We can't not put it anywhere. I mean, so.
You think we could come up with an agreement? I, I can probably, personally, I can lead with the ranges. I would like to see it five hundred to a thousand. I would like to see the thousand feet from a resident. I think if people spoke loudly when we had the public hearing. And I think that would be reasonable.
If we have a hundred and fifty feet of vegetation, what's the extra three hundred feet for, three hundred and fifty feet for?
I, I think we can co- cover that on the spec, to the special exception process. If this, well, they might not need it vegetation. We may could do away with that. If it's in a place where
That's in here, but it's.
We could, they could farm right to it. They could plant beans right to the fence, they could plant pine right to it.
But I, I, I have no problem with you planting it right up to the side of the road. I mean, I agree with you. You should be able to plant beans right up to it, not have to plant trees. But the reason y'all put that in there is because you said somebody didn't want to look at it.
And there is no flexibility on the buffer.
Right, right. No, I mean, that's, that's.
And we can change that, but yeah, can we, you think we can move and come to a survival agreement with a, a range?
There is a range just set of two fifty to a thousand, absolutely. It's the minimum at five times what it is today.
And the buffer is still part of the setback.
The buffer's included in your setup.
Right, it's not.
Normal setbacks, what is that setback for? What is that to?
The property line.
Property line to the fence line.
To, to fence line.
Yeah. I think with the project starts, uh, I don't know, we don't have the current.
It says that property lines are measured from the outside of facility.
That's actually measured, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but Mr. George has said, said we were going from, from fifty to five hundred percent, not as much. What is the fifty for?
Property line.
That's the.
To the outside.
So the property line to the fence of the project.
Okay.
And so what proposed here would go from fifty to a thousand, what's originally proposed. And what you're talking about now is a range.
Yeah, so the fence of the project area, not the whole.
I remember approving anything fifty feet for solar.
Well, can't you have a range without putting?
I think that's.
There's the low end in there. And that based on the, these stats of the project, so it could be considered. But I think that you, whatever you put in is the lowest, that's what they're gonna come in with just as. The gross exact device.
Well, they don't, so with the, the special permitting process, they don't. I see what you're saying as far as they would have a proposed project, but it's the county that inputted the permit. Right? So they don't, it's not a negotiation in the sense of a, of a proper zoning, right? So you just have to follow your ordinance in applying what you can do under what the ordinance says you can do in the permit.
But my issue is if you say we're gonna arrange two fifty to a thousand, every one of them will come in at the minimum initially. And then we say, no, I think you ought to be back about five hundred feet. Why, why are you thinking only? The last one you approved, you were adding for back three hundred fifty feet.
Because there's three driveways that runs in the property, there's a daycare on the corner, there's, uh, I don't know, it's you, what you all about.
I mean, I, I would think.
It's a public hearing.
I would think we'd be more open for a lawsuit if we didn't set a standard that everybody had to meet. I mean, the reason we approved one at three hundred fifty foot setback and tell the next guy that he needed two fifty, first guy has been slated. And so what I'm saying is we're, we're having a problem to ourselves.
That's a special exception. If you did it randomly for no reason different, yeah, such, open yourself up. You said exactly. If you did it randomly for no reason different, yeah, such open yourself up. You said exactly like Mr. One, that's what we do there. Explain the reasons why, then you don't open yourself up for it. But if, yeah, if this one you just said two fifty and were no discussion, and this next one you say three fifty, no discussion. Yeah, you can open yourself up because of the arbitrary and capricious. As long as you have reasons for it.
I agree with David. If we went five hundred to a thousand, they'll all come in at five hundred. Now, you want to reduce setbacks? Convince me that we should be able to do that. Why do you want that? And what, what's your reasoning behind more or less setback? Maybe it's justified, maybe it's not. I mean, we have to make that determination. But you can't come in and say, every one of them will come in two fifty. Well, you know, these folks over here don't like solar farms. I think you need to go to three fifty. Now we're picking sides. I think you can take a higher number. You can reduce it. They can justify why they need it reduced. But you can't add to it. That's my point.
All three of the ones that grew, Amelia, have come in and proposed to us higher than the minimums before. And agreed to go even higher than what they originally proposed.
But that doesn't mean everyone's gonna do that.
No, but they probably will because they're mixing more good.
You get these smaller solar farms, they just want to push the limits on the setbacks. I guarantee it.
Well, the, the smallest. The smallest, who in the world's gonna, wanna put twenty panels on and it's gonna require a hundred acres of land to put twenty acres worth of panels? Who would do that?
Maybe a hundred acres is not the right place for it.
No, 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 they won't, they won't be able to do it at all. Why would you pay for all that land if you can't use it? Just. Those are the people that are gonna sue.
Is that quite a utility scale then? What is the limit for utility scale?
Anything above, down, maybe down.
More than your front yard, it's too.
When I'm saying about prime farmland. What is? Prime. Land, the quality of land, if something was, that's been determined by millions of years. The, the mineralization of. What was stone and so forth and, uh, the. Organic matter and so forth. And so it's, it's. Farmland is, a lot is being done to try to protect farmland all across this country. For good reason. Now, I know it's nice to say when somebody ought to be able to do anything you want with their land. But if he did that, there wouldn't be a reason to have any plan. But a lot of the, the project and the other one that's kind of on a drawing board over in. Oh, Paginato. Is. The, the people that don't live in this county. And, and never lived in this county. So, and they're, you know, people can. Buy land in a million county from another country. The Chinese right now are buying up farmland in this country. And so, uh, I think that, that, uh. That, that we can, we can get, that we can kind of go overboard if we don't have good plans. To protect, I mean, this, this wouldn't be, we had indigenous inhabitants here. At least, at least ten thousand years. And, uh, the, the, the people before have conserved the land sufficiently so that we have it. Down. And so I think we're being short sighted if we say that, you know, we all just. You know, let anybody do what they want with their property that has long-term consequences. Exa general topic.
I think what they were saying more is you can't do it only for solar. Like you can't say prime farmland can be sold off to build houses.
I'd like to do it all, but I, we're not talking about that right now.
So I think that's, it wasn't, it wasn't that anybody's not trying to, it's just saying you can't only do it for solar and, and let them go do everything else with it. That's not.
But that needs to be in the comp plan, you said, right? We'll deal with it later. So let's, let's postpone that conversation. Let's move on.
This settles the setback thing.
Bound it around military bases. So one thing that.
Because that one's making solar path.
I could get into range, um, and more while I sit here and think about it. One intention that I, that I had that I wanted to get across was. You know, if we got a track of land, large track, well, track that's putting solar on it, it backs up to another track of land. I certainly wouldn't make that a thousand foot stuff out. If it going into, what I want to protect is. People looking at it from the roads and looking at it from their driveway, the best we can. And I, I can get into the range because they, they may be a track of land. Yeah, you might have to be a. You know, we might say, yeah, you probably need to be a thousand feet from the left side of your, of your property, but on the backside, you can go deeper. And, and get your acreage you, you want, so.
But I still think the low end of the range ought to be high enough that they, well, they, they're asking us to reduce it. Like you said, if it backed up to a timber track or something like that, and the timber tracker owner came in, then with them and said. I don't have a problem with it, you know, and, and, and they were asking to reduce it to a hundred and fifty feet. I don't really have a problem with that as long as they join the landowner doesn't care, you know, but I think. We need to keep it high enough that they're always asking us to reduce it, that we're not asking them to increase it. That's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
David, again, um, if we had talked about the scenario you just posed, it, that could be addressed along the lines of. When we have the language about the board may prescribe other requirements, we could insert something along to your point about. The site backing up to timberland or farmland. May prescribe other requirements, including variable distance setbacks along joining property lines and rights away. And then depending on the site. Just something that makes it clear to look to people.
You mean get rid of the rank?
No, that, that's, no, I'm just addressing that. But, but that could be.
It does make a nice clarity that it doesn't have to be equal at all. That sentence doesn't. As meaning equal all that, even though that's not necessarily.
I'm saying, because you can't solve for that now. You'd have to see the site.
That's right. Everything is different.
And, and, and if you are hemmed into, whatever we pick, five hundred feet, whatever it is. You would say, oh, that's what it's gonna be all the way around with.
Yeah, that, that, that was not in my kitchen.
So let me come up with some language along the lines of what I said, if that's okay, that addresses that issue.
If you, if you want the buffer, I'm not adult, but if you want that, you need to keep that in there. Because say they cleared that timber.
Right.
And be right next door. You know, we, we, right now, we have a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, they can't eliminate the buffer. The buffer does, the buffer is included in the setback.
One thing about the buffer, you think we ought to have them wanting to maintain it outside? It doesn't state. I was told we have no control over them cutting the grass along the bushes outside. Outside of the fence. Yeah.
It depends on what you say. Typically, they do, they.
Problem up here, they didn't.
No, they said it's up to the landowner.
Yeah.
And the landowner is an out of county absentee land.
I think you ought to at least make them cover.
Right, we did ask that.
Cover that.
That in their agreement, it was the landowner.
Yes, well, that's, we force them to plant the buffer, they ought to at least maintain the buffer back to the fence.
If we didn't have a setback, you wouldn't have the problem. It'd be on a buffer. It'd just be woods there.
Well, maybe they, they wanted, they wanted to clear that buffer from the edge of the buffer back to the fence if the setback's big enough.
Yeah.
Or like that, this is where it grow up.
Well, that one still has bushes o- off the fence. But see, they didn't cut the grass because we have no control, no say so of what they do outside. So you're planting these. Leland cypresses and all this stuff, and then the, there's nothing there.
So, so there's a, so the screening is different than the buffer, okay? So the screening is where they plant. If you look on page three, number two, that's, that's. That, so that area typically they would maintain, or we can tell them they have to, because, because they, and they should replace the trees when they die. And, um, and as appropriate, and they should cut the grass in between them. If that's the look you want. On the screening and using the buffer though, is typically, that's behind the screen. So that's like. That's the rest of, uh, you want it to grow wild? Do you want it to, whatever's there, keep there? That's different. The buffer is a deeper area than just the screening rows. See what I'm saying?
Right, so you get fence and then you get screening.
No, no, the fence is behind all that. You got the road. You got the screening. Trees.
Fence is not on the property line.
Fence is the setback side of. So I'm saying, so they should maintain it where the screening is. Were they planting the cypress trees and all that stuff?
But it's not in that one, on Grub Hill. But it's not, not, it's not enforceable.
Right, right.
The outside of the fence. They only maintain from the fence in. It's not.
Well, put it in this one.
That's where, that's what I said. Let's put it in. I was confused on the, on the, the, the thing.
That way you don't leave it up since the later.
Just a fall in the screen.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you want the screening next to the fence?
It is next to the fence.
It is.
That's why I was confused. That's what he was confusing me.
It's the fence, screen, rest of the buffer.
No. Oh, you're going out though. See, I'm coming in. That's why I was confused.
So they can have a fence. Screening.
Uh, the fence, uh, start at the road.
Then your buffer, screening and fence.
The setback starts where the fence is. So say it's a five hundred feet. So the fence and the project are five hundred feet off the road. All right, all that's between there, that's the buffer and the screen. So that would all be in front of the fence.
Okay.
But not like right in front of the fence unless you, typically they would do a screening, it could be. But typically, but you gotta have a hundred fifty feet buffer. So the screening is in front of the buffer.
But you could put the screen, put the screen right in front of the fence so that somebody farmed that other hundred feet.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to.
Grub Hill, it, it's, it's fence and screening, then buffer.
That sounds bad.
No, that's the way it is. When you pull it off the road, you've got planted pines, they say. And then you go to where they planted the bushes and then you've got a fence. That's why I was confused with you. It's, it's road buffer, screening, trees, fence. And the trees are right off of the fence.
What's because.
Can be retained within the buffer.
Screening and buffer apart are not separate.
The screener suggests is specific to the road.
Crazy plant. Says fifteen feet alone center.
Yeah, the buffer is.
They cut the grass on the trees outside.
Yeah.
And, and they stagger them and say that would. They should also replace dead trees.
I think that's in there. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they had to.
Yeah, well, around the screenings and all.
It wasn't, it's not enforceable though.
Well, you, you worried about the screening and all, what's gonna take care of that fence? I've got a lot of barbed wire fence. If you don't keep that thing clean, you're gonna have cedars growing up through it. Tree falling down on top of it, cattle getting out.
Bands.
Whatever getting in there. So I mean, they need to maintain that fence as well as they do maintain that outside. So their best bet is to be mowing on both sides if they want to be able to maintain that fence.
Yeah.
Cause there is lines coming up on the one on six.
Amazing, but you can't get to it very well.
That's right.
So what do we want to do about the range?
Well, if you want a range, uh, five hundred to a thousand years, right?
Can we come to some type of consensus? Does that still include the thousand feet from a resident?
No, that's different.
That's, that, I thought we had consensus on that.
I'm just saying it's separate from, I personally don't see the need for a range on the setback. What, I don't know what purpose it serves to say five hundred to a thousand. Like, if five hundred is your minimum, why, why are we saying? I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, if five hundred is, if it's a range of five hundred minimum, everybody's gonna come in five hundred. Nobody's gonna come in.
I mean, right. I'm saying whatever you put is your minimum. I don't see why we would put a maximum.
I think if you needed. To, to enforce it on some sides of the property. That, that's why I like the range. Like I said, we would, probably wouldn't enforce it all the way around the property. If it's in a, a bad spot and we need to keep it. Away from something, then we have that flexi- flexibility.
Jeff, what do you think of that?
I think I need to work on the language a little bit, but. I mean, I think it, it could work, and I think what you're signaling to the. Landowners and to the industry is that there's, there's, there's a process and it's site-specific. And you're basically saying, here's, here's what the default typical setback's gonna be. Uh, this range, uh, however, it's gonna be. You apply for your permit. And, and by the way, you could have variable setbacks based on the same. This might be, you know, five hundred feet here and two hundred and fifty feet there, depending on the site. I think at the end of the day, that's, that's the point of special exception permits. And they are a tool that the county has to address site, unique site-specific conditions. That's the whole point of them. And so I think what you're talking about is consistent with, with what the law provides. And then it would just come down to what to do each time. You know, and each project's different, each site is different. And, you know, and your decisions always have to be reasonable. So I think, I think, let me. If y'all are okay in concept, can I work on some language and get it, get it to you on that? And there's a comp plan if you guys are done with the ordinance.
One other thing about these things, I guess the life of this project is gonna be in the length of this, right?
Yeah, they, I mean, there has to be permit, right? The typical lifespan is tall, but we don't know. We'll find out in thirty years, you know, twenty-five.
I don't want to find out thirty years.
Yeah, yeah. So then we, we hear it's thirty years. That's what the, that's what the industry sells. But yeah, the, the permit.
The permit's got a timeframe on it, that's what I'm saying. So if they want to go, if they wanted to extend that thirty years, they'd have to come back to us with a special exception.
I don't consider the thirty-year limit.
I think where we did that, where we typically address that is in the site, siding agreement. I'm not in the special exception.
Well, I'm gonna give everybody a heads up, is it. At one of the meetings about the diesel farm down there, we saw, so it did our farms. But they, uh, after, after the meeting, Ms. Webb and I were standing on the front steps right here talking. And I think it's coming in thirty years. That's all we heard, thirty years life, thirty years, thirty years. And she said, she said, oh no, she said, uh, we intend to run this for a lot longer than that. I said, what do you mean? She said, well, those panels will still eighty percent productive after twenty years. We're gonna pull the panels out, sell them to third little countries. They don't have anything, get a lot of money back and replace some new panels. You're gonna do that just for ten years? She said, oh no, no, no. In twenty years, again, we're gonna do the same thing. I said, how long you think this thing's gonna run? She said, we've anticipated running seventy-five to a hundred years. Ever, I never heard anything out of anybody's mouth other than thirty years throughout the whole process. So do we need to put a timeframe on this? Or do we need to say, in thirty years, they gotta come back and redo their permit no matter what? Cause we're getting every, every, every month.
Why would they redo it if they're not changing?
So this says, okay, so we've already addressed this.
Wait a minute. About my house either.
Page four, number.
Thirty years because it's been there. That's the next generation.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that all of a sudden, they don't take care of it like they should twenty years down the road.
Yeah, it's a.
We start getting inundated with complaints. You know, every planning commission meeting, we got two or three people out there complaining. They're burning up Taylor's desk in here with. Give me a minute. So we, we, so we start seeing a problem there. Are we gonna allow that to go another fifty years? And this is probably of all time. Do we need to have some way to say? No, if you done it right, we'd be glad to give you another twenty or thirty years. However, you're not doing it right and we're gonna pull the plug.
If they don't meet these exceptions, we'll pull the permit anyway. That's, that's the reason for special exception. It's not permanent.
Not everything is covered in that special exception permit. None of them are.
Well, I mean, but all the stuff we just talked, like if they look up. Well, I mean, but all the stuff we just talked, like if they look at the trees, if they let all the trees die, we can pull the permit. So Roy, let's just, look, it says in there that it's reached the end of their useful life or not been actively used. That triggers the.
When you keep replacing those panels, it never, it never reaches the end of his useful life.
Well, if they.
The panel that you're getting rid of.
Has reached its end.
The last thing under the project.
I don't see how you would interpret it.
They all allowed that twenty years and that project stays at that point.
That's the way I read that.
Will we in agreement to that? If that's the case, that needs to, needs to be put in there.
Then let's clarify that on page four, number four.
And I'm not trying to pick on, this is what Ms. Webb told me.
We can revert it back home land. Once they lose it, it's gone. It's never coming back. It's like a house.
This requires, this actually requires you to be returned.
Yes, they're gonna keep on replacing them and keep it going. It's like a house. I see all the houses that have been bulldozed and down and cornered, failing, being farmed right over.
Well, I mean, I think it's something we need to consider. I know it will be here.
These projects, at least for now, are gonna also have a siding agreement. And I think when this fourth project, I think that's how we've more tightly dealt with the. When the agreement's over, they can't operate, right? And the agreement has a lifespan.
As long as somewhere in the permit, something's got a time for it, a time limit on it.
Let me think about that. We could put a, just a not to exceed. I mean, we should, if you put an outside date of thirty-five years, forty, whatever. Forty years and just say, unless the board agrees, otherwise that's the end of the life of the project.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think we ought to do something in case, just in case we're gonna be a problem. If we have no problems and everything runs smooth, they come in thirty years, say we'd like to do another permit for another thirty years. Life's lovely. Everything's great as long as we're not having a problem. It gives us a chance to address any sort of issues. Or if there's been some issues, but not dramatic issues, we address them in the next, in the next time we issue a special exception permit, there's issues addressed. This is a, a chance to police what's going on periodically, is what I'm saying.
All right, I got a real quick question. I got text to me a minute ago, back to the fire on the property. How does the fire department access and regress on the property if there's a fire, if it's fenced and locked? How do they get in?
Answer the question.
We, we got a, we got a cutter to consider calling off the tractor. I think it'd give us.
A good question. Oh, and they have to maintain. Private access anyway.
Yeah, they gotta maintain it. I, like I said, that, that, I'm not trying to cause a problem, stir something. I just think we need to. Have it, have it, uh, uh, I mean, avenue to be able to address problems periodically if there are any.
You gotta spell everything out nowadays because of these modern day lawyers. Spell everything out nowadays because of these modern day lawyers.
Write them in, they can see the original siding. I mean, it says they have to be.
Yeah, there's a term of life in the siding. I mean, there's a term in the siding agreement and that's negotiated with each project. That'll just size it would be.
But then this picks up because if the siding agreement says you can't continue, this says once you're not in that, you're not putting anything, you're twelve months to.
Just check, if you would.
Sure.
In your spare time, just check on that. Check on that sequence, uh, to see where we stand on that. Make sure we do have that provision.
Comp plan? I didn't, I didn't make any changes here. I, I just focused on the zoning ordinance, but it's, uh. But at the end of your pack, I think it's the last page of, of the. And I wasn't here for the discussion we all had on it. Paragraph N would be all new language in their comp plan. Talking about. I, I think it's the very last page of your pack. Top of the page, paragraph N. And this is no different than what you all looked at before. I haven't touched it. Other than I think, uh. Guys wanna talk about it?
I don't know. I just feel like. We need to look into the future and we're not looking at the future. We're looking at today. And that's all it is. Cause you cannot repeal, replace. Prime farm ground. No matter what you do, no matter who owns it. Period. You can't, you can't make it. And if they put it in solar farm, it'll never be back like it was before.
I still understand why these things can't be designed, how to walk around, you can use it for farming underneath there too.
Well, you know, like we talked about, like Lowe's parking lot. Why can't you fill it up? All these big parking lots, why can't you fill them up with solar?
I know, we just put a fifteen mile, we just put a fifteen.
I think they mean they're okay with them being visible in industrial.
Yeah, which is not what we're talking about.
That's not disused.
Parking lots already do have to deal with it, with the runoff. And also. If they're raised up like that. Then actually, the hot weather might be kind of nice.
That's what a lot of places are doing is putting them over their force shade. So Texas, that is, I mean, that's very prevalent. You've got almost every. Corporate parking lot, they're covered because it provides the shade. I mean, it's a great mutual benefit. But as Jeff said, those don't count as utility scale. And they're not generating back to the high transmission line. So they're not applicable at all to our discussion.
That's the thing we're talking about, the big major.
But as we go on in the future, more of it is going.
I thought they were about to tie it up.
And, and there. There, you know, we're gonna see at the space in federal level.
Yeah, they just can't in Amelia because we don't have the high transmission.
Well, that can come.
Can they run, can they dump this into three phase lines?
I don't think when it's over a minute.
Some side projects can use distribution line, but I don't know.
I don't think when you, did you reach this criteria? I don't think you can. I think you can. So what's the other definition? It's the one above small. No, large, the large. It doesn't matter. It's not applicable to what we're doing.
I think that it looks fine to me. Now, one thing you could do is, and I've, I've talked to. Industry folks about this because I think they are, they would like to be able to. Do agriculture on site if they can. And that's something they think would help them with community relations and help them get permits through.
You can put some goats.
Yeah. So, but I think why not put in the comp plan, something that, you know, projects shall be encouraged to maintain, you know, active agricultural uses on site. Where appropriate, in buffers or wherever it can be done. Just encourage them to do it. Again, the comp plan, as you all know, is really just a guide. It's a vision. It's a foundation here. It's not law. It's not a rule. But you want, you want your ordinance to be consistent with the comp plan. I, I do have a little bit of concern with the. Even though it's a comp plan, the ten year look back to me. What I, I guess is if there's consensus on it, I'm not gonna try to convince you otherwise. But it seems like a long look back on past uses of the property.
Not consensus.
Okay, well, I didn't hear the conversation.
And that would take some dozens of years to put the land to the pound.
It, it doesn't mention soil types here though.
Which we could talk.
Maybe there's an opportunity to re-categorize. If you don't like the ten year fact, maybe instead you categorize it.
This farm that they have up here that they're proposing or wanted to propose, I think it was, uh. I think it was about eighty percent of that farm was prime or number two statewide. Yeah, that's the one I pulled, I pulled a saw one on. Or had them do it for me.
So.
But.
So the landowner in that place, do you know the person?
I know of them, yeah. They're not here. They're Chesterfield. Hey, what's, what's talking about that?
They don't do this. I guess my question is then, then what? What are, I mean, then.
It's being farmed just like it always has been.
It is. So don't keep farming if they don't do this.
I would think so. I mean, I just feel that we're. You can't reproduce it. You can't go make more of it. And I'm not talking the ten grades. Number grades, and there's a slew of letter grades behind it, but that just pertains to the slope. But I think we need to preserve the best. Cause we're losing, uh, I think Virginia's losing two thousand acres a week of farm ground. And that's per USDA.
They're noting that your tech, where you said the ten year thing only included crops. It doesn't. This includes agriculture.
Well, all that needs to go. It just, it needs to be.
Just crops?
Yeah, and I don't think it needs.
It says, raise beef cattle ten years ago on my land, you can't use.
But see, I can take a piece of mediocre land and turn it into pasture. I mean, you can do that easily. You go spend a little money, but I'm not gonna be able to take a mediocre piece of land and turn it into prime farm ground. I don't care how much money you spend on it. You're not gonna get it there.
So what, what will you allow you to do with the prime farm land? What's accounting gonna allow you to do with it?
Same reason why you bought it. You're farming. That's what you bought it for.
You could do it.
You, you bought it to farm. Do you see that? Do you like the ego? That's the question.
You would drive the price of that, the land wouldn't be worth anything.
Okay.
But also keep in mind. Unusable production of, of agriculture goes up every single year. The government does.
Okay.
Chief into this. The government pays people right now, not including thousands of acres in Amelia, not to farm.
But what, what kind of ground is this? They're not paying you prime, not to farm that prime ground. Go ahead, Dexter.
Prime farmland is being farmed. They, they, they have what they call the H E L, highly irritable land that they pay you not to farm. It's not the best land in the world. Amelia is number eight. If I was taking an agriculture sale. And it's a reason why we're number eight. We have some good property here. Uh, a lot of folks. Well, let's go back. I, I got a sole consultant and a prop consultant that lives in Virginia Beach. They travel North Carolina, Virginia, Delaware, America. He said, you can be shocked at how many farmers in them parts in eastern Virginia. Ask them, what's the boys in the media do for this? They know Amelia is the top of Agrofals County and it's the potential. Land to make excellent profits if we get. Well, we need to be looking at that to protect that because it's not right now. It's our greenpeace people. It's all this. That's what we gotta look at. We're not looking at for us for thirty years from now. I know I ain't gonna be here in a majority of the farm. It won't be. I hope you are, but. We need to look at the future and everything. And, you know, it. About the twenty years or thirty years, they're gonna just keep on. They, they tell us we can convert it back to farm land. We know that ain't gonna happen. That was gonna happen.
We just went through, they're required to get rid of it and return it.
What did he say? They gonna just pull a pan, replace it, pull this panel, replace that. Follow the panels and he keeps going. Did not pour all of them at once.
Ford just told me that's not allowable because the siding plan has limitations of how long it can go.
And I'm, and I'm gonna put some language in the.
Yeah, okay. But that being said, we need to protect our farm land. Even though production's going up, it's going up at a cost and there is limits to how far you can go. And another thing, they have a change of farmer in this country. It's fifty-seven or fifty-eight years old. Most young people don't want farm now. Who would want to invest a million dollars and can lose it in two years back? Who would lose it?
All right, well, how about this? Prime and statewide, your one and twos. How about we do fifty solar, fifty percent agricultural? You've gotta have a mix. On prime and, and statewide importance. That's your top two pieces of ground.
So you can do anything else?
Well, you can do a solar farm.
No, no, he's saying, but you can do anything else but solar.
We ain't got that far yet.
State of Minnesota was looking at soil types, like you know, roasting in compaction. So no, no, it was whole. The drainage and all that.
What is the percentage? And I can't remember either ordinance, out of subdivision. There's so much percentage you've gotta reserve. Cluster, okay, cluster. What, what is, what's it called? I can't, it's called something when you, when you.
Yeah, open space. Yeah, to preserve a certain.
I'd be much more in favor of this if you weren't restricting very small areas in the county first of all. So you got to keep in mind, you've already said in here, you have to be within one mile of a. High voltage line. We only have two lines in there, in the whole, whole cap. Well, no, because if you had batteries, you would not need to be in, in, close to a high voltage line. But we're saying battery's not gonna be a high voltage line.
No batteries in here.
But we've already eliminated, the majority of the county. Can't, can't be turned into solar farms anyway. Then you wanna go within that further. I think what we're saying is we don't want solar farms. And I think we should just be honest about that. Instead of just trying to pick it off little bit by little bit.
On six oh nine, didn't they just run new high, high voltage lines down through you a couple of years ago? They fed from the sub, substation. The power tan and all that.
That's the second one. That's the one we're referring to.
Yeah, but they just ran those a couple of years ago though.
It's twenty, twenty year project, make it happen. From origi, from original planning, permitting, construction, et cetera.
Okay, maybe so. But I mean, they did. They just ran new lines. So I mean, they could put lines. Who knows where they put them tomorrow? Who knows what's in the works today? I don't know.
Mr. Collins had bought the property originally, the one that's gonna come up. He's deceased. When he originally bought. It was this. Uh, he was, he was using, he was leasing a good farmland, but basically he bought it to hunt them. So to answer your question, the people, are there other reasons why people left our land? Yes, there are. And, and, uh, so, uh. You know, there, well, outdoor things, I mean, that, yeah, today. So, I mean, the nature conserves it is behind a whole, a whole lot of, of land. And. And to, uh. Supervisor Robinson's point, only three percent of the earth surface is arable land.
You go ahead. Just order my plate. Cause order my plate.
Order a dinner. Sir? The, uh, I lost my place now. Moving it from ten to five on the, uh, crop ground.
And where does it say that?
Where it was, uh. Yeah, it's in the comp plan.
Your look back in your land use tax, I think it's a five year look back. I just, there's some basis for consistency with that. Ten does seem pretty wrong to me. Again, this is just the comp plan, but it seems like five seems more consistent with. Someone's had, had their property and land use, then they, they understand they pull it out, but there's a, there's a, there's a penalty for that tax wise. Um, I don't know.
I can live a five, since it lines up with your mind.
Cause you said you're changing it to crop only.
For crops.
Tax record, we won't know whether, we just know.
I was gonna say, how do you, I'm, I'm, if you want to ask me, because I'm fluent, I used to be on a beef farm, but I don't know how the look back works. How, do you go to NRCS and report? Like, how do you, how do you say that something was something nine years ago? Like, what records?
There, there's no precedent for this. I've never seen it done. We'd have to figure out how we do it.
And we don't divide up land use between.
So a lot of it would just be kind of what.
No, you, you get it from right next door, the N G R S. They'll tell you exactly what's grown. Yeah, they know exactly what's been grown on that piece of ground forever.
If they're actually farming, they should be following a schedule to help with IRS every year, so you could track that.
Yeah, yes.
They know what I did with my farm twenty years ago.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering who's here, like, who does? Like, would that be on us to do it? Only coming to do it?
Again, this is just a comp plan, so I mean, if, if, it's actually no one has to.
It's just words on a piece of paper, I think.
Soil type.
Oh, I don't know.
Doesn't really matter.
For land use taxation, of course, it's a bad condition, right? To be back, back if somebody wants to. You know, do, uh, a different, a different use. The next five years.
So the only changes that I hear consensus on so far are to, are to strike, or to. Narrow the definition of act operation to just crop production and to decrease the look back. From ten to five years. Sorry, is there anything else? And then, and then also I talked about, you know, having, having a sentence about encouraging the, uh. Continued agricultural uses where appropriate in buffer areas or where that can't be placed. I, you know, again, this is a comp, but, but something that encourages, hey, you don't have to. You can continue to actively farm where, where, where it makes sense. It's not quite getting as far as you were saying on the fifty fifty, but I don't know if you're gonna, if you're proposing something on that.
Well, nobody really bit, nobody's biting on any of it. I don't, and I mean, that's why they want to use open land. Cause it's cheap. It doesn't, they don't have to pay to dig your stumps up. So it's quick.
Part of the permitting process, they had to. Give us a accurate, a, a current aerial photograph of the property. You can be able to see what's farmland and what's not.
You can make them, we, the county has it online already. We can drive it.
Let me make one other point about the utility scales, solar versus farming. In, during the construction period, the utility scale, so. Uh, you, you know, there is potential for some, uh. Economic benefit in the community. So far, we haven't seen much benefit from that at all. It's come from people doing it, come from Texas and, and Mississippi, it's larger than I've talked to. But that, once the construction is done. It's very passive. It's monitored remotely. And so it's. Other than the, the, uh, any annual tax revenue, there's no benefit. When something is agricultural production, there's a lot of inputs that that farmer makes. To produce the product. And it's, 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 it's everything else down the line. It's the fuel. It's a, it's the auto parts stores, uh, and so forth. And in economics, it's, it's called the multiplier effect. In the average of the multiplier effect is about four times. In other words, what they're spending is it's spent on down the line by the people who receive it. It's worth is about four times to the economy. And the comprehensive plan. Has things in it with regard to the. You know, the general welfare and so forth. I, I still have it in front of me, but there is basis. For, uh, this is also basis for.
So Mr. Gore, we answered all your.
Got it. Got a lot of notes. I'll take the last version of all this and, and just, and just mark up some changes based on tonight's discussion. Get that to Taylor, get it circulated. You know, what I've heard tonight, I don't, what I've heard tonight, I don't. Would even require a comeback for the, of the parents. I don't think that significant changes from their original, they already got it.
They're actually, we've all, it's been addressing the feedbacks if you aren't from. I think that's a key point too. The main points we're talking about.
Right. So I think that'll be the case, but let me, let me put it in the paper and then we'll get it around to you all to, you know. We go back to being the special staff and. Go from there. But I think this was, this was helpful for me to take.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Is anybody from the Board of Supervisors having a comment?
Thank you for participation.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, we'll see you next month. Unless I die before then.